Great, good evening, everyone. It's Tuesday, January fourteenth, I'd like to call the Link Love Public Library Board of Trustees meeting to order at seven oh three on this brisk winter evening. Ally, if you could roll call please.
Trustee Shaw.
Here.
Trustee Jardine.
Yeah.
Trustee Hayes.
Yeah.
Trustee Graziano.
Here.
Hi, that is absent.
And can I make a motion now to permit trustee Church to participate remotely?
You can.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Stand? Okay, Janie, welcome, can you hear us okay?
She's in yet.
Oh.
She.
Yeah, she's not in yet. Okay.
What's?
Then I'd like to motion again when she's officially on, I guess. Um, let's stand for the pledge. We have a forum, we can continue with the meeting. I'd like to be.
Yes. The United States of America. Interegal Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, are there any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda? Hearing none? Are there any members of the public to address the board, there's none here in our meeting room? Any Anthony online? No, is Janie Church connected yet? Not yet. Alright, um, our next item, agenda item six, is to approve the minutes from the November nineteenth meeting. Ally, there's just one small change, actually. Um, new business. Looks like item F was just like a formatting carry forward, I don't think there was an item F. When you read through them.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Any other additions, corrections, or motions to approve the minutes this time?
Um, I'll motion to approve the minutes, um, November ninth.
Thank you, trustee Jardine, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Graziano. I forget, do we roll comments? Thank you.
Which means it won't chat unless Janie's on.
Okay, so we'll come back to this. So is it a quorum of trustees who will present at this meeting, so Ally, me, Janie, and Sandy, we have enough people that we can, okay, sorry. Alright. Um. Let me put text her and see what the challenge is. I guess it's a long way to where it is. Uh, okay, so we'll come back to the minutes. I have a red draft.
Yes. If you have any questions about anything in the written report, let me know, I just want to mention that Nicholas Rosales, who's our new building and grounds maintenance worker, has been with us for a week and he is already still busy making busy making himself indispensable, he has replaced dozens of lights throughout the building that had burned out. He has replaced filters in water fountains, he has taken responsibility for snow and ice removal, he has built carts for book carts for staff, he has he's done some minor plumbing repairs, there's a whole bunch of things he's been able to do for us in just a, just a brief week, which is
Great, a week?
Yeah, one one week, one week in a day, one week in a day, so.
How many days is he onsite here? Or really vary by week?
He's, he's generally, he'll be onsite here every day, Monday through Friday. Um, his full-time job is an afternoon and evening job, so he will generally be with us from seven thirty in the morning, Monday through Friday, um, Monday through Thursday until about twelve thirty in the afternoon, and on Fridays until ten AM. And, you know, and, and there, you know, could be some flexibility built in there if we ever needed him at other times, but the fact that he's able to be here early in the morning, he's able to get a great deal done before, before a lot of staff are already been here in the building, his onboarding has gone very smoothly. Eliza's been able to also spend a lot of time with him because, you know, in, in the absence of having someone to take care of building grounds, she has been the, the library's primary point of contact on a lot of that, and she has a lot of knowledge about the way the building operates and the way the systems operate, so she's able to to communicate a lot of that information to him, so they've, they've also spent a good deal of time together.
That's great. When you say like snow and ice removal, where people usually have is like the sidewalks?
Yeah, the sidewalks and the steps and the, and the ramp, well, uh, when, when we needed to, we would have our, I have our landscaping company coming and take care of it for us, and, and there may still be some times when we might still need to do that.
Yeah.
The parking lot is plowed by the bill. Right. Yeah, yeah, so that's yeah, that's, yeah, he's, yeah, he's, he's terrific, he is terrific, I'm very glad he's here.
In regard to having now this position at the library, I think it may be important to, and maybe you've already done this, um, communicate with him and with Kathy O'Hara at the museum.
Okay.
And others. I want to make sure that he, his, he understands that his responsibilities are the entire exterior, the shared spaces, and the library.
Oh, got it, okay, yes, okay, absolutely, I will, if that isn't already clear, I'll, I'll make it clear.
Yeah, I think if Janie were on the line, she might have a comment.
I am here.
Oh, wait, you are, okay. Um, we did move before you were officially connected to permit you to participate, so since we're in the middle of this conversation, I'm not going to go back and remove.
Okay.
Re-motion.
We do.
We do, yeah, set up okay with everybody?
Move second.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, um, so Janie, I'm not sure at what point you joined in.
Well, I've been in for probably two minutes, and I heard David saying that, that he's very happy with our new guy, and I, I would agree with you, Bonnie, that, um, you know, he, he needs, we need to make sure that he understands that he's working in the whole building, not just the library part of it, and, um.
Well, Janie, what, what you're saying is that?
Well, I mean, if there's, if there's, you know, glitzy stuff, glitchy, glitchy is what the word I meant to say, stuff going on in the museum side of the building, you know, that he would address that too. That you don't, you don't agree?
No, no. He, this, this role is not split financially between the library and the museum.
I see.
There are tenants, so they're responsible for their own, the upkeep of their own property, right?
Correct, they're responsible for things like changing the light bulbs or ensuring, um, you know, that they have the carpeting on their, on their stairs is safe, or the, um.
Yeah, I mean, I'll say, the three and a half months that I've been here, they've not once asked me for anything related to the maintenance of their space.
Well, they do, we do provide them with with the cleaning service that comes in and empties their garbage and stuff like that, right?
I wasn't even thinking of that, I'm, then I'm sure that they have been doing that, because if they hadn't, I would have heard that they weren't, so, yes.
Okay, alright, okay.
But besides that, they've never asked for any other maintenance assistance from me or from the staff as far as I know.
Yeah.
What, what I would recommend is that, um, Nicholas, uh, be advised that should any requests come from a non-library employee, it could be a patron, it could be somebody visiting the museum, it could be somebody volunteering at the museum, staff at the museum. He speak with you and determine what the best course of action is, which might be, you know, I'm sorry, it's not part of my responsibility.
Yep, I will make sure I communicate.
Yeah.
Sounds, sounds perfectly fair.
Yeah, and we'll take it from there.
Great, so, any, any, any other questions about Nick's work?
Just thank you so much for the hiring.
We are thrilled that we have him on board.
Sure you guys are.
And Molly and
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, and you, so you saw in Eliza's report that, that Molly Coyle will be joining us at the beginning of February, we're also very excited to have her, she brings a great deal of experience, and I think that her onboarding will be just as smooth as Nick's. Just again, want to point out that there will be a meeting of the Architectural Review Board for the Village on Tuesday, February fourth, the library will be on their agenda, and they will, with the villages, um, I guess, say so, approve the, the, um, the proposal that we've gotten from Highland Park Electric to replace all of the, the sconces and exterior lights around the building. I don't know if you all recall seeing it, but I had, I had, because I figured I would be asked for this information, I asked Highland Park Electric to do two separate proposals, one for replacing all nine of the lights on the three sides of the building, and one to just the ones that face the parking lot, which they did, the village made it clear that the only one of those two that they were going to recommend for approval was the one that replaced all nine. So that's, looks like that's what's, what's, what's going to happen, so once they approve it, I go back to Highland Park Electric, and they can, uh, they can acquire all the materials, and it was very simple, but once they, once they knew that we already had the proposals and plans, and all they had to do was execute it, it was, it was, it was a simple thing, I got the proposal back in a day, so it was very quick. Um, and then also, um, we have a, uh, now a signed agreement with Midwest Environmental Consulting to be in the process for the project for asbestos abatement. Um, I expect someone from that company to be here by the end of the month to start that process, and the beginning of the process, of course, is just to, um, create the plan so that it can be, uh, turned into a, a favorable bid process, and then that bid will go out to qualified qualified contractors to, to do the work, Midwest Environmental will run that whole process for us, and they will, uh, and they will recommend the, the bidder that is the most qualified and satisfies all of the, all of the requirements. Um, so all of that will happen hopefully sometime in the month of February. Uh, in the meantime, there are all kinds of bureaucratic forms for the state grant administrator that I'm now starting to try to complete, now that we've gotten this part of it, this part of it done. So that's kind of where all of that is living right now.
I have a question, unfortunately, I wasn't able to make Building and Grounds earlier last week, I think it was, um, the bids that Midwest Environmental is going to manage for us, is it the bid for asbestos abatement as well as putting Humpty Dumpty back together again, so to speak?
I will clarify that, but I think it is only for the asbestos abatement. Um, but when I meet with the, uh, the representative, I will, I will ask about that part. We might have to, they may not do that part of it, we may have to find another, uh, another company to do that, or, or, or a contractor to do that.
You've got a deadline pretty confident, able to do things like that.
Well, um, for example, some of the asbestos is in drywall tape.
Right.
So once that's removed, I'd like the library to get put back together again as soon as possible so that we're not functioning in a construction zone.
I can add that I'm sorry, I, I can add in that that, that is an issue with, um, the lower entrance next to the kitchen as well, when, you know, when that is taken up, uh, that just includes, includes, the quote that we have just includes removing it, we have to get somebody in to move the radiators and, um, you know, replace the flooring and then put the radiators back in.
Yeah, so, so I would, I would prefer to delay the removal of the asbestos until such time as we know we can back-to-back get the building put back together again, be it recupated, re-drywalling, or the tile, its staff entrance, it's not public facing. But for safety reasons, it seems that it should be put back together again right away.
I, I would agree, and I, I think, um, maybe Midwest Environmental Consulting, the idea to, I think, if I've got this correct, is that they're going to be like the general contractor?
Yes.
They're going to have subs come in to actually do the work, I wonder if they might suggest and/or be willing to supervise the reconstruction work as well.
As I said, I can, I can have that conversation with the company representative when they come in later this month.
Yeah.
And get that information for you, for sure.
Great, thanks.
Um, okay, so, uh, and, and again, you know, the, there, there, there is that, the issue of the, of the hundred thousand dollar appropriation, the state grant administrator has been asking repeatedly for the forms because they do need to, to get in, so I'm, I'm working as quickly as I can to try to get that done. Uh, because again, there's no, there's no guarantee that the money will be afforded again if we don't, if we don't leave the state state, so I'll work as fast as I can on that, but the, your next director might have to, you know, finish that project. And, uh, we did today, complete the submission of the, of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five per capita grant to the, to the state libraries, that is all done, and has been accepted.
Two weeks early.
Yeah. Yeah, so, yay. So that's done as well. Um, okay, um, any, any other questions about anything in the report that, uh, that I've contributed, that Eliza's contributed, or that Jill's contributed?
Just curious, Gus, when is, when was his last day with us? Sorry to hear he's gone.
Oh, gosh, uh, what's it been, a month? Eliza's, it's been about a month?
December.
That sounds right, honestly, um, time, time is blurring these days.
It was, uh, December twelfth, I believe, it was right before the staff meeting.
Thank you, Jill.
So do we currently have a vacancy, or has that?
Well, there, yes, technically there is, I mean, we've, we've, uh, we've now filled the, the manager position that will start in a few weeks, we've got the, the building and grounds worker, you're in the process of hiring the director, now Eliza and I, uh, while working on some, uh, information for your next budget discussion, she has brought to me the possibility of, uh, perhaps not filling that position at all. So we'll, we'll continue that, that conversation, um, just from the point of view of trying to, um, reallocate monies of, that would have been spent on that position. Um, again, we just start, she just started that conversation with me, I want to get a better sense of how she feels about that, and, you know, the next manager might have, uh, some things to, to say about that as well, but um, Eliza seems to think that if we, if we had to for budgetary reasons, we might be able to get away with not filling that position. So.
How many hours was Gus typically scheduled for?
Uh, fifteen or sixteen.
Thank you. Alright, I, I, he was very helpful at the desk, I'm sorry to see him go, but it sounds like, you know, getting a full-time job.
Yeah, yes, exactly, 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 and I know.
Yes.
Okay, so I, um, I did with the best of my ability in the program, give you some statistics for each of the four categories for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four so that you could, uh, make some comparisons, because I know that there was a request from last board meeting to have some year-to-year comparison information, I am sure there is a much better way to present this information, um, you know, in a way that's, that's easier to look at and easier to make the comparisons, and, um, and I know we have, uh, staff here that are, uh, much more adept at that program than I am, that, uh, I can talk to about doing that, but, um, with the time that I had, I at least wanted to, uh, give you, uh, since it's the end of the year, um, what, what twenty twenty-three looked like in its, in its totality, and what twenty twenty-four looked like for circulation, for collections, for database usage.
So what struck me, looking at the circulation comparison, twenty twenty-three by month, twenty twenty-four by month, is that circulation is down, it looks like it's down, and I wonder what impact the pilot hours have had on that. Um, so I would just encourage you guys to put the uh, first set of stacked bar charts. Our charts, twenty twenty-three is the first one, twenty twenty-four is the second one, so you can even see like for December twenty twenty-three compared to December of twenty twenty-four, circulation is down.
There's probably like a percentage of the number of pounds that are relevant. Would, I mean, I wonder if that, the math sort of works out, close to that, so if we, if we cut fifteen percent, would that be, uh, corresponding to, to those numbers?
Yeah, so to me, it kind of begged the question, you know, I'd love to get a look at the door count information that we used to look at across the seven days and across each, all the hours, I think it was I don't know, that it was a twenty-four hour chart, but you remember the green, the orange, yellow, red charts, um, from the door count information that we installed in October of twenty twenty-three, I want to say. Um. So, David, I have a ask for you, um, if you can uh, work with the management team to see if you, we can generate the door count information.
Sure.
By hour, by day.
By hour, by day, for what period of time?
That's an excellent um, I would say for a month at a time.
Okay.
So, December, October, November, December, what do you guys think? I think September might have been the last board meeting where we saw that information.
Okay. Excuse me.
Okay.
Okay, I will talk and we will see what is there.
We can have it for the next board meeting, so thirty-day run here, or, you know, running time to take a quick look at that.
Great.
Um, I'm just curious, any other comments from management team or the board about circulation for twenty twenty-three versus twenty twenty-four? I know, Bill, you've offered a hypothesis around the
I know, just, just, I mean, obviously the hours that we pull back, with the exception of Sunday, it would reduce um, the number of people coming in, so I'm guessing it's probably more in the, in the Sunday. When you see the reduction.
So I have one piece of observational data to offer up here in terms of circulation. Um, the same person works every Thursday evening, and they have, uh, given me their observational data that they see approximately three checkouts between six and eight PM consistently on Thursdays, we don't typically see much more than that.
Thank you. Um, well, does a decrease in circulation impact our, uh, per capita grant amount?
No, that's based solely on our population.
Right, okay, right, yeah.
Hence the term.
That's all it's based on, yeah, nothing else at all.
Thank you. Um. Then I know, I know the next section is collection totals, and what I see reflected in this data is the commentary in David's, um, report about the weeding that's happened in the library. So I'm very pleased to see that we're lighting up the load of our collection in the building, especially as we head toward an asbestos abatement. Where you have to protect the collection keeper from getting too damaged with dust and stuff. Does anyone else have any other questions or comments on the, again, I appreciate your responsiveness, David, to get, giving us these year-over-year comparisons on a couple of these key performance indicators for the ones, right?
Sure.
Alright, um, then that brings us to approval of the library board meeting minutes. Um, Janie, we need your, uh, vote on this because of the people who were present for the November nineteenth meeting. Um, Ally has, you know, provided the minutes, they're in the packet, there was one small correction, um, under ten new business, just something erroneous letter that's sitting out there. Um, so, let's once again work on approval of the minutes for November nineteenth.
Okay, I
Okay.
I'm moved to approve the it's been a long day, I'm sorry, um, the, um, minutes, the
From which date?
November nineteen.
That's okay. No worries, uh, okay, so we have a motion to approve the minutes from November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four from trustee Jardine, is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you, trustee Church, and I think we do a roll call for minutes, thank you, Dave. Ally, we're ready.
Okay, trustee Shaw.
Aye.
Trustee Jardine.
Aye.
Trustee Hayes.
I'm staying.
Trustee Graziano.
I'm staying.
Trustee Church.
Aye.
Okay, and the motion carries, the minutes are approved, thank you. Okay. Now, we are on agenda item number eight, the financial reports for November and December twenty twenty-four. So, David, if you would walk us through the small staple collection of financial reports.
Sure, um, thank you.
Your, your packet, um, erroneously
Yeah.
left out the revenues portion.
Yeah, I apologize, I don't know why that was, but I was able to go back in tonight and run it again and get all the revenue information. Um, I mean, I don't necessarily have anything I want to, uh, draw attention to in the revenue and expenditure report, um, but again, if you have questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
My one question is, uh, so we know the abatement project is being, is using those Illinois state grant funds, which have been repurposed from the security system, correct?
Right.
However, we have some of the security system pieces here, or no?
No.
Okay.
We have, we have some, uh, preliminary information about, um, that project, again, mostly related to the presence of the asbestos that, that CBI and the security company that they hired brought in, but there's been no work done at all.
Okay, or, I mean, like, did, did, maybe
No, no.
Materials.
We were, we're talking about that, we were using the money for that.
Yes.
Right, yeah, that was, right, your, your plan
Yeah.
was to use the one hundred thousand dollar appropriation for this new security and access system, and so you, uh, before I got here, you hired, uh, Computer View, and they brought in their, the security company that they were working with, and they began reviews of the building, um, that the way I understand it was when the asbestos was maybe first discovered, or we, we real, they realized that it was going to be in the way of the project. While I, after I got here, there were still some additional tours of the building, and Janie was present for those as well with CBI and the security company and Midwest Environmental. And then finally, about, about two months ago now, um, we got a, a brief sort of memo from the head of CBI saying our recommendation is that we, that you pause this project because of the problems that the asbestos mitigation would present in trying to install the system.
Yes.
And that's when I went back to the state and said, can this money be used instead for asbestos abatement, and they said yes.
Yes, which, uh, totally tracking.
So that, is that what you're asking?
Remembering Renee saying, we've received some invoices, and I don't know if that is, we had received invoices.
We received invoices from CBI, yes, for, for the, for this, for this work that, the time that they were spending.
Just time-related, not any
Not, not, as far as I know, not materials.
Okay.
But their
I remember the same thing, I remember.
But their time.
But it was a significant amount.
It sure was.
Yeah.
And we've, and we have paid them.
Yeah, yeah, and that was in there, but it was in, like Yeah, yeah, and that was in there, but it was in the like.
Uh, well, I, I'd have to get the exact amount, uh, it would, it would leave, I would say at least fifteen.
Yeah, so they've got, so basically they're all ready to go once we sort of pull the trigger and we won't pull the trigger till after.
I, well, if, if and when you decide that it is time to install a security and access system. My understanding is that they basically have the information that they need in order to proceed. Um, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I remembered, I remembered some of those funds being spent down. Wanted to make sure I knew.
Yeah.
What, remember what was, but so we're assuming that fifteen also coming out of the grant or being that under. A facilities line, like what we paid them previously.
Yeah, I. I would need to get more information about how to handle that. I, if, I would think, I, I don't even want to speculate. Uh, what I was going to say was, if you're moving ahead within asbestos abatement project, and that's what you're asking now the state for the money. To perform. What you've paid the C B I for what they did.
Right.
Doesn't really have anything to do.
Yes, comes out of something.
It would have to come up, yes.
It should believe it was already paid, so. Yeah, I was just curious where.
Cause they had already done the war.
It is, since it's already spent funds on books, just making sure that it is. Coded, I'm, I was just trying to get my head straight on where.
I, 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 I'm tracking your comments, Ally. I think we need to know a couple things. One, how much was paid to C B I for the security system? We do pay them for other things, because they can provide other services to us, right?
Oh.
Just for the security system.
Right.
Number two, I think the answer to this is zero. Um, have we asked the state to reimburse any of those C B I expenses? That's what I thought, I thought it'd be zero. And then what's the proper accounting of those C B I expenses? Given that. Installation of security systems on hold. We want to advance and handle the problem in the building, the asbestos, before we forward with. The asbestos.
Yeah.
With the security system, um.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, I was just trying to.
I can, I can get that information.
So, se- second follow up.
But yes, you, you have paid them and no, you're not going to get that money from the state idol.
That's, I just, oh, yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure, for some reason, they had reimbursed it.
No.
That it wasn't gonna end up being like a messy crossover and.
Yeah.
All that, but.
I think it's important to know, we should probably have this as a follow up for finance, future finance committee meetings. I know it can't be on Thursdays because it's. Already been published, the agenda, but how much was paid to C B I? Is that something we want to have? Held with C B I? Do we want to ask for any of it? Can any of it be reimbursed to the library? So it can be used for something else? Or is it something that we take as a credit? And they work it down against the routine services that they, they provide the library?
Uh.
You see what I mean?
I, I see exactly, I see exactly what you mean. Um, I am happy to have that conversation with Roxy. Um, I can probably guess what the response is gonna be, but I'm happy to have it and find out. Um, so, yes.
Okay. Alright, so we have revenues. Revenues are at ninety-five percent against the fiscal year completion of sixty-seven. I think we're okay on revenues. I think we might be a little late, maybe a little late. Uh, just, just to achieve our forty-four thousand dollars in investment income. What do you think, though?
Well, it's.
It's close.
We, we should be at sixty-six, so three percent difference.
Yeah.
Um. So we're at twenty-eight, maybe another sixteen, or that, or like low numbers in there, so, yeah. More twelve. Seven fifteen, yeah, feedback forty-two, maybe forty-one, forty-two, any kinds.
Here's a, here's a funny question I have that just popped into my head. I don't know if you noticed or not, but. I spent most of my career working in Cook County. Cook County, the Cook County assessor always added in. A, a loss on, a loss in collection percentage to the levy automatically. Um, because that, because it was always assumed that there would be a certain percentage not collected. I have a feeling Lake County does not do that, but I was wondering if you knew whether they did that or not. You know what I'm, you know what I mean?
I know what you, yeah, know what I mean, yeah, figuring that you're gonna, you know.
You know, like, like, they, they, they always figured it up, and, you know, in some places I worked, it was more than. Than the percentage in some places, I was like, it was less, you still got it. But it was, it was about three percent. They would automatically add it in about three percent to your levy, just to account for lost in collection. I just wanted to play.
Uh, I, I know that we haven't sort of made that allowance, um.
Yeah.
But, but generally, we've been sort of within plus and minus.
Okay.
One percent.
I figured that, but the loss here was not great, but.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just. I would just, but they are, but yeah, Cook County always did that, so, okay.
Okay.
Excuse me.
So, uh, in terms of expenses. So running, running hot on business, on building maintenance.
Yes, yes. Um, I think, you know, there will be a number of things to continue talking about at Thursday's meeting, including those parts of the budget that are. Considerably overspent, and I, I honestly don't see that that's going to change much in the next fiscal year, particularly. As those things relate to the building, the, the building, as you know, needs a lot of attention. Um. And, um, I mean, you know, there were even with, with Nick beginning this week, I mean, there were a number of things immediately that we realized that we didn't even have here. So that he could do some of the basic work. I mean, the first day or second day, it was a, in this very room, there was some kind of. Uh, emergency light fixture falling out of the ceiling that he needed to repair, and he had to borrow Anthony's tools. In order to do it, because we didn't have anything on air. So we're, I mean, so we're like going out to buy him some basic tools so he can do. He can do his work, um, so, you know, I, with as much as the, as the building needs, I don't. See that you're gonna be able to budget for much less than you're currently spending on that kind of thing.
I T and hardware.
Yeah, but, and we'll have, and we'll have, and Anthony has just put together a fantastic proposal comparing. Uh, two different companies and what he's recommending and what they're recommending for the improvement of technology for the library. And we'll be able to bring that into the, into the budget conversation as well. And there are some implications there for. For our use of C B I for some of this work called them.
Any other questions or comments on expenditures?
The only other thing on that, um, building maintenance category, David, if, if any of the C B I. Stuff we need to know.
I'll check, I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
But I'll check.
It was, if we put it in there as a holder for.
I, I don't think so, but.
I don't think so, it's, it's, it doesn't seem high enough.
It, it does seem inordinately high, even.
Yeah.
The paint job, the six thousand, seven thousand dollar paint job is in there, it still seems.
Right.
Really high.
It is, so, it was, it was lower going into the budget last year with the idea that. Um, some other funds would, would cover some of these, um. Things, I guess, kind of, Renee was looking at some of the others, so. Um, but I, I, I tend to, I mean, I agree with David, I think it's still gonna be higher next year.
Oh, for, for Thursday, I will try to provide a, a detailed report of that particular. G L I and what's, what's been spent from it.
Yeah, and I think, and I think we looked at it a few months.
Did you?
As well, I, I think it was one of those categories to, to kind of see what, what was in there.
Okay.
We were looking at next years, that's what I say, okay, we won't be doing the painting again, so we could take that number out. As we were trying to sort of look at that, sort of a number going forward.
For some reason, I think because we had rain delays. Throughout March, April, I don't think the paint job got done until May and paid until May, but.
Right, I think, yeah, I think there is a payment in there that, that, that went into this year that should have gone to last year's.
Alright, so we're at seventy-two point one-one on expenditures for the year. Now, we're good, not bad. Um, looking at the grants, I'm just looking for the uh deposit of the check from the foundation. I think I see it, maybe. Might appear in the November report. Okay, this is the period ending.
Yeah.
December, because I believe it came in, should have, came in the day of the board meeting in November or shortly thereafter.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll get that information soon.
You know, I just let us know on Thursday.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The other thing is that, uh, I know we're gonna talk about the uh, when you, the group, the. I J that there's money that would be, in theory, could happen, this, we have, so, back in. We're looking at.
Yeah, I mean, that is the, mostly the, the lead contribution, which would have been budgeted.
Yeah.
I think in both years. Um. And then some catch-up on utilities. Okay, any other questions on grants? Okay. And then I think we're ready for a quick, uh. Thirty thousand foot on checks.
Um, I uh believe I uh ran the report so that they were in check number order, um.
Yeah, sorry, we're gonna vote first to approve the. December twenty twenty-four revenue and expenditure report. So the December report is, does have a cumulative year-to-date, which includes November. We don't have standalone November report. How would the board like to approve the, the. Financials? The revenue and expenditure report. This is a new situation. I, I don't remember us doing this since I've been on the board, so do you have any guidance, David, for? How to handle that one? We don't have a standalone November report.
No, I understand, interesting, are you asking for motion language? Is that what you're, or are you asking about what would the board like to do?
Yeah, what would the board like to do with, we have, I think we have. Some information in front of us. We don't have a standalone November report. We do have a cumulative year-to-date view. That includes November in the December report.
Would you like to just uh table this for this part of the meeting? While I see if I can get the report out of here and print it for you? For, for the month of November? I mean, in other words, would you just like to move on to other, other business and then come back to this? A little later in the meeting, if I can get the information.
Well, then, in theory, I mean, we probably have to go through that in, in before we could vote on it. I mean, we, we could vote that, um. Uh, we'd approve the revenue and expenditure report for December, um. Which would assume that, that, and, and maybe mention. Um, end year-to-date, uh, to include November. Unless there's something drastic in November, which doesn't look like there's any, I mean, from a year-to-date.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't expect that there is, it's just, it, it, it's, I mean, it's your, it's your vote, so you need to tell me. What you're comfortable with. I, I guess I shouldn't, I should not have assumed that, you know, you were, you were okay with the way these were. Presented, but.
I have a proposal. Why don't we take a five-minute recess? Let David run upstairs, print the November report. You can print it from.
I can try to. By, by your, yeah.
And this way we can approve them both. I don't, I, I think, given that we have a year date in the December, we don't have to do a. We have to come through November as, uh, finally, is that okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with the cumulative report, but if folks feel the need to look at. The November report in depth, then I'll fall to that.
I think it would be helpful to just have it included, have a look at it. Hold on. Um, another option is we could continue with committee reports. While David's getting the information printed, so that we, we're not on pause.
You know, I'd like to kind of.
Is that preferred?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you, thank you for, thank you for the verbal feedback. Alright, um, we're gonna table, uh, revenue expenditures and checks. And, uh, Jamie, you're good with that?
I'm, I'm fine with that, sure.
Alright, thank you, thank you. Uh, H R committee, I'm sure you've got a very interesting report.
Well, thank you, I wanna say thanks. To everyone for coming to, um, the last two rounds of interviews that we had, thank you to David for being our point of contact with. Um, Dieters and Todd, I think they've done a wonderful job. I really appreciate all of their. Um, guidance that they've provided to us. Um, so, um, that's what I'll start with. I'll start with the executive search, and then I just have one other report regarding, uh, the personal handbook. So I wrote some notes. Uh, okay, so, uh, Dieters and Todd have been moving forward with their executive search. Board members met. Um, last week to, uh, five candidates over Zoom. And the board unanimously chose two candidates, uh, to move forward with the final interview. Uh, so the final, uh, I'd like to make sure at the last, um. At the last meeting that we had, we determined that February first was the best date that worked for the board. Um, to meet with the final candidates, and I just wanted to make sure that that date still works. Okay, uh. David was great putting everyone in, into context, so we were able to find out that this room is not going to be available on that day because. There is the crashed swap. Um, so, uh, Dieters and Todd, they, uh, said. We can also use a, a village, uh, meeting room. So David, we reached out to the village and we're able to use their room over there for. Um, because there are, I think, three parts to the next interview. The candidates will come back and they will present, do a presentation. Um, and this presentation will be open to not only the trustees, but staff as well. Um, and then, uh, there's also a tour for the, um, interviewing. And then we will also, the trustees will meet alone when to, uh, interview the final candidates. Um, so, we really needed a full day in order to get all of it in, so Dieters and Todd said, they recommended, it's about three hours. For each candidate, so David was able to work with the village to get the board room, the.
Room. Conference room.
Sorry, at the village hall.
Right.
From eight to five.
Eight thirty to five.
Eight thirty to five. So we have not, um. Dieters and Todd asked us to confirm with you first, and then they're gonna reach out to the candidates to arrange the time like that. So I assume that they've already left the other candidates now. That was the impression I got. But, so they'll make final arrangements with them to come in that day.
So that's a Saturday, February first.
Yes.
Uh, I'm going to be on vacation and out of the country. Um, so I'm just curious, Bill, if you're.
I'm not, I'm not out of the country, I'm a man of the state.
Out of state, okay, um. The, the other thing I wanted to mention is that, uh, it just came up during our H R discussions, uh, and recruitment. Um. The, I, the. Role of the president and the director. Pretty tight. I think you guys heard me saying that today. On a variety of topics, I sent David thirteen emails. I don't think I've sent him thirteen emails.
In total. I'm sorry.
Oh, not quite that, but, you know, I stopped and say hi sometimes. Um, but, uh. I, I am not going to run to become president of the board effective May first. I'm stepping down. I think it's very important for the next director to have someone who is in. The state or in the country more than I plan to be for the next several years. Um, I'm gonna be gone seven out of the twelve weeks starting Saturday. So, um, I, 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 I know that that's not the best way for the director to start in a new role. In the library, um, and with a couple of new board members as well. So, um, I feel that my not being, um, face-to-face with the final candidates is okay. And chances are, someone from the. someone from the H R, someone from the H R committee can extend the offer to the selected candidate, just as the board president did not extend the offer to our prior, uh, the person we hired two, two years ago. Um, so I just wanted to be transparent about my contributions to the board. Um, kind of changing my level of, uh, contributions to the board and and not serving as the president effective May first. Or May, whenever the board meeting is. So. Um, no, with that, we know that, uh, then the quorum of board members available for February first are Ally, Jenny, Sandy, and Janie at this time. We don't know about Matt. I'll follow up with Matt. Go tomorrow, I see.
Uh, can I just add a little information of what you were just saying? So I just, I confirmed with, you're talking about core composition. I confirmed with the village that the two, there were two individuals who submitted nominating papers of to run for election, Bonnie and the individual
Okay.
what they had for the floor. Um, so when, and those are the only two of the four seats that will be available. So forgive me if you already know all this, but when, when the election happens in the board, the new board sits then in May, you will be down to five trustees. And it'll, it'll then be the, the board's responsibility to find and appoint by state law to other people to to sit on the laboratory board, because you don't have enough people running for the seats that will be available. Forgive me if you already do all.
Um, there, there. Ally reminded me yesterday as we we're both in attendance at the village board meeting last night to support the I G A. The deadline for any writing candidates to submit the required paperwork is the end of this month. So if you know anyone, anyone at all.
Still working on one.
I'm, I'm working on some too.
I'm sorry, what was that, Janie?
Uh, I'm working on some too. Uh,
Great.
So it, the deadline is the end of January or the end of February?
The write-in deadline is January thirtieth.
Hey.
Uh, but correct me if I'm wrong, David. If someone doesn't do that, then the board could appoint trustees, which is typically done through like a application to the board.
Correct. Energy process.
After the, after the board sits.
Yes, so there would be from like January thirty first, if no write-in candidate submitted paperwork, we would know there are two open seats for sure. If for some reason by January thirtieth, two people file their write-ins.
They're good.
Then we're fine, but, um, yes, yeah, declaration of intent to be right is due January thirtieth for the April first ballot.
So the other option would be is that come the end of April thirtieth, then, uh, and you have two other people, you could go through the interviewing process and bring them on in May straight away when the board says.
I guess you could cultivate interested applicants, right, from?
Yeah.
I did have one person who said, I don't like the idea of publicly running for office. That was like very off-putting to her. Um, she likes behind the scenes. She doesn't like, like she wants to do the work, but was like, and I've said, you don't have to campaign.
No.
It'll be okay. Um, but that is like maybe the type of person that would normally say.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, sorry, Jenny, I hijacked your H R committee report.
It's one. Um, uh, the last thing I wanted to talk about was, um, Jim and Alex are gonna be putting together a list of interview questions and they will be the same for each candidate. And they were interested to hear from the board if there are any questions, topics that they'd like, that we would like to see covered. Um, and so they suggested, if you have any, you could tell me tonight, or you could just email me and we can send it to them. And they would use those to help form the questions that they're going to give to us that we present to the candidates. Okay, so did anyone have any questions about the executive search?
It's going great. It's going great.
Thank God. Keep going. Heard some great professionals. Okay, um, and the last thing I wanted to talk about was, um, I sent everyone a copy of the proposal that we received from H R source. Um, the H R committee has taken the time to kind of look at the personnel handbook that we've been working with for the past few years. I know there's been some updates. Uh, there's been some updates on policies, you know, over the past few years, but in the time that I've been at the, on the board, I don't think we've done a full review of the personnel handbook. Uh, so, uh, we did submit the handbook with some questions on specific policies to H R source and, uh, what they have offered, the proposal that they returned to us is just to do a review, a full review of the personal handbook for legal compliance. Uh, and it costs, uh, two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Um, so our committee hasn't had a chance to meet and review the proposal again, but I wanted to let everyone know that we've been talking about this and we have to maybe get to see if you want to move forward. This is a different, I think, a different intent than we had originally talked about. And so we have to decide if that's, we want to move forward as it is or David offered to also go back and ask them more questions if we needed something more specific.
At the end of the day, would you get, um, uh, information, uh, for handbook or just the recommendations? Would they write it for you or?
It sounds like they'll give us it and then we have to format it and put it all together.
When they typically do a review like this for that fee, what they will, they, they, they will review the entire handbook. And they will give you their opinions on what they think, uh, for instance, is missing that you need to have or should have. Their opinion on things that you have that you may not or should not have. Um, if you, they typically do not give you opinions on how you have chosen to apply benefits. Un- unless there's something not proper about the way you're doing it. Um, in other words, if there's a law, for instance, about a certain benefit that you as a public entity that you need to offer and you're not doing it, they'll tell you that, but they're not going to give you their opinion on this is how much vacation time you should offer, how much personal time. They're, they're not going to do that.
Will they, but will they write the, the verbiage in to, oh, this is the way, this is what you're missing in this.
Yes, they, they would, if, if, if there was something that they, that they were recommending that you, that you, uh, include, they would, they would give you some sample language, yes.
Yeah, I mean, most companies might review that. So, but that hasn't been done.
But yeah, I mean, you would, you as a board would need to decide what, what level of benefit in certain categories you were comfortable with offering. And if you wanted some, some comparative opinion from them, you could ask. I don't know that they typically will do that, but we could ask them. If that, if that's something you're concerned about. Are you understand what I'm saying, Jenny?
Yes, yes. Well, but I, I think so. I think it's good to have some of these questions when we go back, after we meet with the committee.
Yeah.
To have, so like if anyone has, so can you tell me that again, so I can write it down? Because I feel like we had more questions. All we've done is received the proposal and so we haven't been able to meet. We haven't gone back to H R source to say, these are some things we have about, how do we do this works and so we can kind of work all together.
But send you something.
Would you?
Yeah.
That would be great.
Yes.
So, yes, I think we just wanted to get some ideas from the board about what we thought about the proposal, if you had any thoughts at all.
Mm-hmm.
So feel free to, so we can bring it to the committee and discuss it there. Thank you. Um, that's all for H R. Thank you, everyone that's been helping. It's been quite a group effort.
Thanks, Jenny.
Thank you.
All right, finance and technology match.
We did, uh, notes here. Uh, we, we discussed the levy at that time. It had, it had gone through sort of very, oh, not a, not a big deal type thing. So it's, that, that worked out well, because I think overall what we were looking for and then what the village was, was, was under everything. So that helped everything. One of the action items we, we came up with was to develop a roadmap for next year's levy process. So that'd be something that, that I would lead with, with input from, from everybody, um, at, uh, I had it down for the next board meeting, but we'll discuss it. I'll see, I'll show this thing. But the idea would be is, you know, when the process would start, we talked about that this process should be made in June or July and not under the, um, September, October timeframe. We can be better prepared, uh, for what we would be looking for. Um, and then, uh, Lysa was at the, 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 uh, meeting and and, uh, we, we talked through some, uh, different areas in collection, tech, reference building and outreach. As far as where we are budget-wise with, with the preliminary budget that was put together and, and some things that that maybe numbers were not correct or needed to be a little bit higher, some could be lower. So that'll be a continual process that I'll next meeting to finalize it. And then also then we were gonna, uh, uh, look at the tech budget proposal, uh, that was gonna be, uh, being worked on in the future. So those are the areas that, uh, we, we looked at and we have another meeting on Thursday.
Any questions for finance and technologies? Building and grounds, Janie.
Well, I was hoping that Sandy was going to take over this.
It's fine.
I don't have any paperwork here with me.
Okay, I always go to the chair first.
For sure. That's fine. That's fine.
Um, so we discussed the parking lot light project, which David has given you an update on. And we also discussed the asbestos pavement pro- project, which he's also giving you data on. So that's pretty much it. That's where we stand right now is what he's, you know, he's done. That's all I have, really.
Okay, thank you, Sandy. That was succinct.
Level three.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yep. All right, so we're gonna go back to financial reports. Thank you again, David. You've provided us with the November report.
I'm, I'm sorry, this hasn't been a little more streamlined for you. I, I just the S, the S and A for me is not the most, uh, not the easiest thing to do for me. But there you are.
There we are.
Thank you.
Um, so I had a quick glance. And, uh, just of note, the interest are higher in November than December. Suggesting that the rates have gone down. And or we've kind of temporarily dipped in. I know, I don't think we've temporarily dipped into reserve because our property revenue, um, is so high for year to date.
Yeah.
Um, so it's gotta be rates.
Yeah.
What else did I notice? Oh, and the grant, uh, the restricted donation of thirty-five thousand dollars was recorded.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, yep. So. That's why that's not, not staffing up. Right, so in November, revenues were at ninety-four percent of year to date. Again, that's a full twelve months, ninety-four percent of twelve months with only six months done. Seven months done. Uh, and expenditures were at sixty-three point two five percent. So thank you, David, for running this report.
You better.
Any other comments or questions about the November financials? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the November and December twenty twenty four revenue and expenditure reports?
A motion to approve the November and December revenue expenditure.
Thanks, Trustee Hayes. Is there a second? I have a second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call.
Trustee Shaw.
Hi.
Trustee Journey, uh, Trustee Hayes.
I.
Trustee Jerk.
Hi.
Trustee Grasiana.
Hi.
Hi. All right. Now, the check report.
All right, again, I hope, uh, it's in the order that you're used to seeing it. I ran it, uh, in check number order from the end of the, um, yeah, right.
Go ahead.
Um, from the end, yeah, from the end of the, um, October meeting to the, uh,
Or the November meeting.
November meeting, sorry, to the, to the end. Um, the only I want to say is that at the very beginning, you will see two, uh, expenditures for Mission Square. And they're at the beginning because there, we're no longer doing those by traditional check. We're doing them by A C H transfer. So they'll be, they'll, they're still basically accounted for the same way, but they're not going to appear as a check in the register, but that'll appear the way you see them.
So I do have a quick question. Checks number one, three, six, two, four, through one, six, three, three, two. I don't see them. We approved them last.
Uh, there.
The six, three, two, four.
Bullet mission square.
I have two of six.
You don't have, you're on page one? I mean, okay, we'll see our table.
Six, four, six, five, six, 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 six. I probably do. It's just.
It's on the line. There you go.
There they are.
Does everybody else have them?
Okay.
Okay, I just I blew out a staple. Staple. Okay, thank you. I see them.
All right.
Any question, any other questions on checks?
Um, looking for it now. I was just saying before, the snow removal and cleaning stuff you mentioned before that now that Nicholas is here. Um, but that's single apply or was that? The one that was.
Uh, well, we did, uh, we did use our, our landscaping company to do, to come in and do some special, uh, salting and de-icing and snow removal for us.
Okay.
And so, yeah, we did have to pay them for that when we don't may not typically have to do that. So, yes.
I think additionally, um,
And to be clear, we're gonna continue using a cleaning company as well.
Yes, no, we're done.
Yeah.
But to Trustee Hayes's point.
Yes.
I think knowing that, you know, we have somebody coming in at seven thirty in the morning, four, five days, five days a week.
Yeah.
Um, we want to make sure that we're continuing to evaluate the necessity of having the cleaning service in three days a week.
Okay.
Four days a week or whatever it is.
Sure.
Um, clean, the cleaning services substantial expense.
I, I was more looking at the snow. That's a different company that does that.
That's it. Yeah, that's a, that's, that's our landscaping company.
Exactly.
Right. Yes, exactly, right.
But to be, so I just want to clarify, Bonnie, your comment is that
Sorry.
That Nicholas would do some of the things that the cleaning company is currently doing? Is that weird?
Removal of the trash.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if we have a bisal or something to help get up all the salt and things that's, that are gonna get trapped in the the leaves that get trapped in the carpeting, the salt that gets trapped in the carpeting, um, you know, seasonally.
That, yeah, you don't have to list out. I just want to make sure I understand that that's.
That's what she's, yeah, that's what I understood.
Yes, now, um. Okay.
Cleaning company does like separate, separate things within your maintenance.
Yeah, I just like, is that something that's in his job description? I just want to make sure. I want to make sure I understand too, like, is the agreement that he has currently at the library, does that encompass some of the?
It was, uh, it was not. That's not the way I understood it.
Yeah.
Uh, I understood that, that he would be here for the, the kinds of things I've been describing that he's doing, plus all the other things he's going to be doing, uh, and not the basic cleaning, emptying of trash, vacuuming, dusting that the cleaning company does.
Yeah.
If that is an expectation, I, I'm, we can, I can certainly go back and, and reevaluate that. Uh, and had, have, and talk with him about that. I don't think that he would. If I said, we want to build this, some of this into your work routine, I don't think he would that, I don't think it would be an objection, but that would be something that I don't think there was a big expectation that he would do it.
Yeah.
And particularly with all the work he has to do.
Right.
I would think that, that this cleaning stuff would still be a separate team of people, especially since it's a public building. Team of people, especially since it's a public building and you have kids coming and there's just a lot. I mean, I would think you would, we would want to keep the cleaning company. And maybe we need to look at what it costs and see if there is another company that we is. But I do think that cleaning companies are just kind of expensive, but and but they're all like a worthwhile service, because we don't want staff doing it and. The maintenance guy, I would think he's.
I mean, there is, I mean, again, your, your next director may want to reevaluate a lot of that.
Yeah.
But I, just from my perspective, there's a great deal for a part-time person like him to be doing in the building. Um, and I, and and if you were to add on the responsibilities of all the cleaning that the, that the external company does. I'm not sure how much more time he would have left.
Yeah, yeah, that was my, yeah. I don't want any like scope.
You know, and you know, and 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 we've talked about this too. I mean, he will, the, you know, as his onboarding progresses and he becomes more familiar with. The building and our systems, he's going to take over the responsibility, many of which have either been Eliza's or the directors. To do the communicating with the, with all of the, the maintenance vendors, to make sure that. All of this, all of the, the safety uh, uh, tests are done and the protocols are met and. Communicating with the village department about their expectations. So he's, he's going to begin, you know, doing more of that. And again. Eliza has, has really been the, the, the staff point person on a lot of that, whatever, whatever Renee and your previous library director weren't doing.
I think it's lovely.
Those filters hadn't been changed in two years.
Yeah, I know, the water filter was last changed in January, or sorry, March of twenty twenty three, so it's practically two years old.
Yeah, I hope so, but that's great. And someone that keeps track of all that, it's like a full-time job to keep track of all those things.
Yeah. Okay, um. Have we done the roll call vote for this? For checks, no. Alright, is there a motion to approve checks numbered one, six, three, two, four through one, six, three, eight, two?
I will move to approve the checks, one numbered one, six, three, two, four through one, six, three, two.
Thank you, Trustee Friedman, is there a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Trustee Hayes, roll call vote please.
Trustee Shaw.
I.
Trustee Jardine.
Trustee Hayes.
Trustee George.
Epstein.
Trustee Diana.
Janie, can you shed a little light on the abstention?
Well, just because I don't have that document in front of me right now, so um, that's the only reason. And also usually I sign those checks, so I see them. I didn't this time.
Yes, yes. Okay, um, we are then finished with the financials for tonight. We've. Completed all the committee updates that I'm aware of, run agenda item number ten. Um, I wanted to make sure that the board knew that myself, David and Ally. Will all be attending the Lake Forest Lake Bluff Chamber of Commerce event. It's the update with the two village administrator and the. City administrator, I guess, for Lake Forest. On January seventeenth, great, and Gillian will be attending as well. Um, we'll let you know the February meeting of any important information that gets shared at that meeting. Um, I'm glad I'm able to go this year for the last two years I've been out of town. Not. Um, is there anything regarding the Deters and Todd Director's search update that we haven't shared through HR Committee? Update. Great. And that brings us to new business, corporate grant opportunity for STEM, um, in. Sometime after the November board meeting, an E newsletter came around that I've copied on. I get the E newsletter from Sandy Hart. And in this E newsletter, there was a comment that it's either Abbott or AVV had provided a grant. And or donation to a local organization. At this point in time, I can't remember the exact name of the organization. I said to myself. I'm a tiree of one of those companies. Um, I've wanted to reach out to them on behalf of the library to see if they would be willing to support any STEM. Investments here in their library. Both Abbott and AVV routinely make contributions to the communities in which their employees live. Um, one of the ways that they've done this is they had an advertisement around the Lake Forest High School football field for. A num- a number of years of my children who were attending Lake Forest High School. Um, Abbott funded a number of the, all the sidewalk plaques, I think it's all of them that are here in Lake. So they have a history of providing contributions to. All types of municipalities, organizations, so. I wanted to see if the board would support um, myself and probably David. And and maybe Gillian, if it's appropriate, given her her um, job responsibilities. That we reach out to Abbott and AVV and see if they would be willing to support and upgrade to all the computers and the software here in the library. Right?
Yeah.
I think at last estimate, and and Anthony, please correct me if I'm wrong. You know, to to replace Windows seven and get some of these two thousand seven laptops out of our inventory. I think it was like thirty thousand dollars. Thirty-three, okay. Alright, so we can talk more about potentially on Thursday at. Finance and Technology. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that. People were aware, thought it was a good idea.
It's great.
See what happens.
Bonnie, can I ask a question about that? I I'd be all over um. Eight STEM investments, um, and I'm wondering if if it could, if we can come up with something beyond just upgrading our. Laptops and and our software, um. I I would like to see us maybe offer some STEM um, based programs for kids, for. Grade school kids and stuff like that. And I don't know, um, I'm sure we still, we already offer some. I'd love to see us offer more. Um, and in a community like this, I think there'd be a a great response to anything we'd offer. And I I'm just saying this completely off the top of my head, because I'm sure the schools do a lot of that stuff too, as do I know a lot of scouting organizations. And other organizations do that, but I'd certainly be happy to explore some ideas, let me put it that way.
Janie, are you thinking that they would provide funding so that library could offer STEM programs?
Yes, yes.
Um, I I think, I think that's, that's, that's a, a valiant idea. I would turn to the staff to see if we have capacity.
Well, capacity and and we don't wanna reinvent the wheel. I'm sure there's other, like I'm saying, I'm speaking completely off the top of my head here, but um. There, there's probably a lot of that going on and um. I don't wanna put us in competition with existing programs or anything like that, but it it'd be, you know, certainly worth a conversation with the staff. To see how they feel about it.
The schools have beautiful STEM labs, um, at all of the schools have their own beautiful STEM labs that we uh, are not. Prepared to compete with at this time.
Gotcha. Is there, is there anything more? Um, Eliza, that you think that we could be doing to support that sort of stuff?
Uh, we have pursued in the past uh, STEM and STEAM programming and we continue to pursue it, um. At this time, I think that the infrastructure needs of the library are probably the thing that should be prioritized right now.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, thank you, thank you for uh. For reining me in, um.
And and that doesn't mean it's not something that couldn't be developed further and, uh, you know, approaching other. Community partners, corporate uh, neighbors, et cetera, for something like that, but I just. I I feel like, how, how do we help the community with their technology needs if we are so far behind that?
Good point. Thank you.
And I happen to know that AVV has a three-year replacement policy. And when somebody reads that we have computers that have been circulating since two thousand seven, they will be a guest.
No doubt.
That's the response we want to.
A little inside.
Anthony, do you know, does that thirty-three thousand dollar number include things like a self-checkout, like an automated checkout? Or is it just like software and?
So it's primarily getting us up to date with uh, security services, uh, that includes all software and also our primary server.
Can you, can you provide me a list of what it includes?
Yeah, yeah, Anthony, he just sent me today um, an email with uh, with his full proposal and recommendations.
Right.
And I haven't even had a chance to read it myself yet.
Cool. And now the big event of the night. First, thank you to Ally, who's been such a engaged. And um, effective partner in the IGA negotiations. She is, she is the reason this IGA does not mention component unit.
That wasn't.
Thank you.
But you did.
She is the reason why this.
It was actually just a learning moment for all.
Yes. In accounting term. Um, so the IGA that's in your um, packet was uh, started in July and. Yesterday, the village board unanimously approved this IGA. It's a five-year IGA. It expires April of twenty twenty-nine, because effective date is actually in twenty twenty.
Four.
Four. Um, so when we approve it as a board and it gets signed. There will be about thirty-three thousand dollars worth of um, uh, former of leap contribution. As well as the three thousand dollars in the utilities. That was a, a mix-up between the village and the library a number of years ago. Um. I think one of the key learning points for me is that um. On an annual basis, the village does have discretion over. The um, levy for the library. That's our attorneys. I didn't wanna believe it. I tried to convince Ally and David that it wasn't true. But our attorneys convinced me.
That we need to present it to them and they need to approve it.
Yes.
And it's different than it, it works at most other places, right?
Well, practically speaking, yes. I mean, whether or not, whether or not other places have had that authority, they've not chosen to use it in the same. Way as it appears, the village of Lake Bluff may be prepared to use that authority.
Use it.
Right, right.
So like, what gives them the, what, what is the basis?
Because they are, have the levy authority.
Um, they present.
In the village.
The library does not have the authority to levy its own tax.
Additionally, any. No, I had a room to do.
No, no, no. That, that's all I was gonna say. The, the library doesn't have the, the authority to levy its own tax, only the village does.
This is a artifact of being a local library as opposed to a district library. Additionally, we as a local library cannot take out bonds for building improvements. The village would have to take out a bond on our behalf.
You can see it in part four of the IGA.
The word approved.
The library word reflects.
Um, the, the agreement does have uh, one-year renewals, once it hits the five years. Um, there is a CPI factor. It's the PTEL CPI factor that's used in calculating the contribution the village will make to. The um, upkeep of the building. Um, additionally, the village will continue to provide accounting services. They will continue to provide audit services and insurance coverage, assuming the library cannot find a cheaper alternative. This will be something that will be in the runway of the first nine to twelve months of our next director. To evaluate actions for standalone insurance coverage for the library, which we may not be able to get. And so we upgrade our security systems on the computer, um, as well as our own audit services.
Can I, there's, that's one of my questions on there. So why, why are they asking or why are we looking to try? And get these services ourselves? Was that just part of the agreement that?
We're not necessarily trying to procure, like, we're not actively saying this isn't good enough, let's find others. It's that the. They are providing this service in this estimated amount.
Right.
But should there be a firm that provides it at less of the cost the village would pay for that? Let's say we found auditing that was.
Right.
You know, five thousand a year. They would then pay for us to get a five thousand dollar a year audit, rather. That's not gonna happen. They get, we all get a deal bundled.
I was gonna say, well, why, you know, why would we want to, to do that anyway? Period. Let them, they're gonna do the bundling and they're gonna do everything in there. So, or is this, this twenty-four months, uh?
Well. I mean, it's confusing to me too. I mean, for, uh, uh, again, when it's, it's particularly when if you're talking about insurance. There's, if there is a, if there's a consortium, if there is a, if there's a package deal, I'm not sure why necessarily you wanna try to. Split that up. Um, that, that, I mean, it, it, it might, it might make more sense to me about the, about the audit, but even there, I'm confused about. For instance, if the, if the library were to find, and we probably would, find an auditor to do the library's audit for less money. Is the, is the village okay if that, if the, that auditor is different than their auditor? Yeah, that's, it doesn't really make a lot of sense to me, so.
Now, that, that was kind of where I was looking.
It would, it would have made more sense to me if, if the, God forbid, you go back to try to renegotiate another IGA. Um, but it would have made more sense, it would have made, it would have made more sense. It would have made more sense. I'm sorry, I don't mind, I don't mind going on record. Um, it would have made more sense to me to say, well, why don't we negotiate the library paying a portion of what we're already doing? Right? So, so we'll negotiate, so you pay for X percent of the insurance, or you pay for X percent of the audit, but we'll keep doing it the same way. And when we, the village, decide it's time to find a new order, because we've been using the, the order we have for a hundred years, then, you know, we'll just do that.
So.
It's confusing to me.
So, part, part of the perspective that the village uh, negotiating team brought was that. We serve the same group of residents. We ha- we collect tax revenue from them. We should all be good financial stewards. And they're saying the only way that the library should split off is if you're gonna save the taxpayers money. And because we have it in our run rate to pay your insurance and the um, actuarial services. If you can find it for less, we'll give you that money. Actually wind up saving some money and putting it into their own programs, right? So, um, I, that, that's the perspective I, I.
Yeah, it's a bit of a burden of sort of exercise is what I gather from our conversations, because the last IGA was. So long that that had not been done.
Got it, okay.
Because it was a twenty-five year run rate.
That we had not, this had not been done.
And it had, and it wasn't actually mentioned in the previous IGA, that the village does provide the financials. Okay, does provide and pay for the audit and insurance, so. Any other questions?
Totally understand those points.
Yeah.
Right.
And I don't disagree.
Right, because I was just saying, if you say it didn't ten percent or even twenty percent, that's a lot of time and effort for someone to go through. And like you said.
To save six hundred bucks or?
Yeah, to save, yeah.
Yeah.
Three grand, um, five, something else, okay. That was that, and then you asked the question about the twenty-five versus twenty-four. Which I kind of figured that.
The start date is in twenty twenty-four, yeah.
Very good.
Alright, if there are no other questions, we'll take a roll call vote.
Need a motion.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the twenty twenty-four intergovernmental agreement between Lake Bluff Village and Lake Bluff Library? I so move. Thank you, trustee George. Is there a second?
Awesome.
Thank you, trustee Hayes. Let's do roll call vote.
Hey, trustee Shaw.
I.
Trustee Jordan.
I'm.
Trustee Hayes.
I.
Trustee George.
I.
Trustee Gransina. Bye.
The motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so, comment cards and social media, library correspondence and communication?
No other correspondence other than the three comment cards that you, uh, that you see, and I think they're pretty short and sweet.
Yeah. I think it's interesting to see Sunday hours are still being requested by the community.
Oh, can I make one note? Let's assume a little Lake Forest Library reach out for something unrelated to this. Um, so their hours, four hours on Sundays, which seems like fairly standard.
It is, yeah, four, four to five hours on Sunday, yeah.
And I know right now there's a lot of like, but Forest Library is open on Sundays and you guys aren't. Well, I learned Lake Forest Library does not allow room reservations. They told me today.
Uh, on Sundays?
In general.
Oh, in general.
You can't.
Can you repeat that, Ally? I didn't, I didn't hear that.
Lake Forest Library does not allow room reservations.
Does not allow room reservations.
Yes.
They, they, they do not have a meeting room or?
Yes, they do not allow, they don't have, yeah, they don't have the space essentially, as she told me. They have the one space in the, um, in the basement, yes, um, but otherwise I had called and inquired about. And I thought, wow.
Yeah, it's, I guess they limited just a library provided room.
Which makes sense. I just did not realize such a large space, didn't realize there weren't more meeting spaces.
No, I think, you know, there, there to the history is that the, um, uh, that the Horton Center has often served as the community meeting space. So if you are a community organization, you want to use meeting space in the community, you often go to the Horton Center.
Oh, no. I was just thinking, like, I've got a lot of that, they're open on Sundays.
Yeah, no.
Can you serve a room in, in Lake Bluff? Not on Sundays. No, man. Parks and Parks. Yeah, can you even reserve enough?
Yes. Think you've had a birthday party there, no?
I did. Not myself.
Number twenty-nine?
It was a, uh.
The Lake, the Lake Bluff Parks Department rent rooms?
Yes, they didn't, they didn't. So that's a great point that you made, that there has been like the, that's the community gathering space and leveraging owners and our municipality.
Yeah.
So, thank you for that. It was just an anecdote.
Is executive session required this evening? No. Okay. Great, then is there a motion to adjourn?
I will move to adjourn at eight thirty-six PM.
Thank you, trustee Friedman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Jordan. All those in favor?
I.
I.
Oppose? All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.